is now joining.
They're coming in, those screens are going to get smaller and smaller, huh?
Yep, there's nothing wrong with that.
People come in.
Is this my best deal, Joe?
I'm actually good, as long as everybody, we can see each other and we can hear, I think this is cool.
This is great, this is great.
I do go to the spot.
Yeah.
Patty's on.
I'll be on sometimes.
Also, some people are on but don't have video.
Rita and Patty, do you guys have your videos on?
Yeah, I can see everybody, can you see me?
No.
Now, okay, Rita, can you try talking as well?
Rita.
Let's try that again, can you hear me, I can see you.
I can hear you, and now we can see you, so I guess as people talk, your faces will pop up.
Correct.
All we can see is glasses on you, Patty.
That's all you can see are my glasses?
No, not that you made an adjustment.
A few seconds ago.
Mr. Wasserstrom, can you try talking so we can see if your camera will pop up?
Alright, so, Kelly's here. Nate just joined, hi.
Hello, 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 hello.
Right, you'll pop up, we hear you.
Great.
Nate Hogan, we see that you're here, can you say something?
Marla Shepherd.
Can you hear me now, Dr. Bedell?
I can hear you now, yeah.
is now joining.
You guys look wonderful.
Hey, we just hear working.
I love it.
Do you have, do you have video, Nate, on yours?
Uh, is it not showing?
No.
Oh, that's weird, because my camera's on and I can see myself.
I see you, yeah. I see you now.
You do?
Yep.
Do I look as incredible as you guys expected?
No.
Alright.
A quick heads up, guys, I might have to slide out at 3:30, I'm going to try and do joint conference calls, but I'll stay as long as I can.
Okay, hey Patty Manczer, do we have a call on to get started?
Um, well, can you hear me, Dr. Bedell, I want to make sure you can hear me.
I can hear you.
Clear.
Okay, so can June, is June present and can she do a roll call vote?
Okay, Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Present.
Mr. Hogan?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Present.
Ms. Manczer?
Here.
Mr. Wasserstrom? Jennifer Wolfsee. We do have a forum, four of the six.
Okay, and I'm guessing that we will have Jennifer and Mr. Wasserstrom momentarily. So, this board meeting was posted and publicly noticed for us to discuss updates to the KCPS plans regarding COVID-19. There are two items on the agenda, and the first item on the agenda is related to a proposed board motion to, for the board to take a formal action regarding the administration's recommendation that all of the schools in the Kansas City 33th School District be closed after spring break until April 3, 2020, to align with guidance from local, state, and federal healthcare authorities to minimize the spread of COVID-19. Before I take, accept a motion, Mr. Thornton recommended that we do this kind of motion and take a formal action, even though we had agreed previously to Dr. Bedell and his team's recommendation in light of what local health authorities, city, and state leaders were recommending. Because as a board, many of us on the board had questions about the authority of city and county government leaders to direct us to close our schools. Mr. Thornton did some administrative review or legal review and recommended that based on statute 171.031 regarding the calendar and the school board's authority in setting the calendar and changing that calendar, that it would be in order for us to take a formal action that we move and approve to close schools. Before we take a motion, are there any questions about that? Alright, so I would accept a motion.
So moved.
And a second. Second.
I know, did you second it, Marvia?
I guess.
We can't hear you, it looked like you did, baby.
Yeah, sorry with me trying to reduce background noise, yes, I seconded.
Okay.
Okay, great, so it has been moved and seconded, is there any debate on this motion? Hearing none, the secretary will call the roll.
Mr. Abarca?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Manczer?
Yes.
Did Mr. Wasserstrom or Ms. Wolfsee join?
Okay, the motion passes. The second item on the agenda for today is the update from the administration regarding KCPS's COVID-19 response and plans, so I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Bedell.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we have conducted a lot of work since we last met. I'll start off with just a couple of calls that we had. We already, our superintendents came together, the local superintendents, to talk about what would be the potential end date so that we can have uniformity, and they talked about the third being that date where, you know, concluding and potentially coming back on the sixth, depending on, you know, what's happening here with the number of cases. Fear that we all have as superintendents is, we're not health officials, so you know, who's going to make that decision that the third isn't, the sixth isn't appropriate time to come back? It is a big concern, and so, we, our concern as a whole is the lack, once again, the lack of leadership from the highest levels of office in this state right now. A lot of things nebulous, we did hear comments from the governor yesterday that, that included him probably speaking more around what does this all mean for the educational institutions? And, and so, we just, we just don't know, we're in the air, I think we will continue to monitor and look at the numbers. We know Jackson County now has a couple of cases. And we also may believe that we may be impacted directly here, we don't know at this point confirmation, but, Mr. Abarca, we saw an email from, a text message or email from you yesterday around somebody saying that this may be, there may be, one of them may be a KCPS employee. We also know that we've had employees that went on a recruiting trip. And we have one right now that is being quarantined.
She's in hospital, she's in hospital, and she was actually admitted to ICU this morning.
Oh, yeah, we have one that's been admitted to ICU this morning, that was a part of that recruitment trip, recall. So, we, we just, right now, just don't know around the cases. The thing I can give you assurances of is, if you look at the cycles of how this has played out in Asia and China in particular, they had a ton of tents set up, emergency hospitals set up. Those numbers are starting to, they're starting to close some of them down, which means that they, they are at a point where they're starting to get it under control, but think about how long their schools have been closed. Think about how people were told that they have to stay in, and they're still not at a point where schools are opening up and people are being allowed to have that social interaction. And so, you know, if you look at those trends and then you think about the numbers in the United States and how we have significantly, we're over 5,000 now and growing, and we're growing even here in the local area. Two weeks of not having school may be a little bit unrealistic right now when you look at the trends in the past, so I think for us, we have to start thinking long-term, what does this mean? As we go to close out this school year, and that is actually their conversation that all of the superintendents are having, but we, at this point, will continue to operate in two-week increments, unless there's some executive order that tells us that we have to close for the remainder of the year. So that's, that's kind of the other thing on that side of the conversation as far as when do we open up. Now, a couple of other things, we, all of the districts are working on their individual plans around work package, or how they're going to be doing work assignments, how they're going to be doing food distribution. We're all sharing our plans with the cooperating school districts. So everything that we have that we released today will go into a database that will be available for anybody else to look at, and if they want to utilize it and vice versa, those plans are going to be available. We were, we were talking about virtual schools, most of us do not have the bandwidth to do virtual schools, so like, this is the next big thing that I'm going to be working on, our team is working on, Joe's already looking into some things, and he's in here now. But I also, you know, there's a company out, and I got this email from Gwen Grant earlier today, and let me just pull it up so I can tell you, it's a company called Charter, and what they're doing is they're willing to offer free access to spec, broadband wifi for 60 days for new K through 12 and college student households, that's something that we want to take a look at. We want to also figure out how could we use a major lender like Kaufman to help underwrite some of this, should we need this longer than the 60-day period? So, that, that's one of the conversations that we all out here are having. How can we get accessibility, and if we are going to be out through the remainder of the year, that is where we're going to have to probably make a decision to get those one-to-one devices, K through 12, for all of our kids so we can go more virtual. So that's, that's the stuff that we're working on now and will be working on from yesterday through the next several days, try to come up with some solutions, and that, even a more of us a unified solution as a whole in this region. So that's, that's the update I have around the virtual piece.
Dr. Bedell, would it be okay to pause for a moment to see what questions people have on this component? Both questions that anyone has regarding the collaboration of the superintendents, questions regarding the technology component and the one-to-one.
Yeah, this is Nate, I have a question. Dr. Bedell, regarding your first point around just the sort of lack of direction at the state level, is this, I mean, do we have an opportunity to sort of leverage Barge and Associates and Jeff Citi to sort of push the governor and Desi both, I don't know how they interact with Desi, but specifically the governor around, you know, getting specific around the challenges that we're facing, helping them understand what sort of answers we're expecting or we need in order to be able to sort of operate more cohesively as a district? You know, getting some very specific questions in front of the governor using our lobbyists so that we can sort of put pressure on them, I would, I would guess the cooperating school districts and their lobbyists could help, and MSBA as well.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, I will tell you all, I've already been on the horn with Greg Razor and some folks, talking to them about putting pressure on the governor to be a little bit more proactive and a little bit more clear. So, to your point, yeah, that's something we could look at utilizing the lobbyists from both, both of those organizations, we're taking that down.
I did have a question.
Dr. Bedell, I have a question on the technology component, oh, I'm sorry, Marvia, is that you?
Yeah, I just had a quick comment with you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, my thought is just that if we find that we're not going to be able to do the whole virtual schooling or what have you, I think we have to find a way to communicate that very concisely and clearly to parents. Like, I think that as other districts are closing and have decided to close through the end of the year and have moved to virtual schools, people are kind of getting that expectation, and I think that the conversation around equity and why we can't just do that if we can't provide it equitably, I think that discussion has to be put down at a very basic level, like, it has to be, if we're talking like reading levels or what have you, maybe sixth, seventh grade level, just to make sure people understand, because people are really wondering, why, why can't we do something virtual? I think two weeks is fine without it, but if we have to go long-term, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a piece that you, you've hit on the head. I feel like that's a lot of, some of the frustration that folks are dealing with on the Kansas side, but I, I was just on the phone with Fairfax, which is one of the largest school districts in the state of Virginia, and, you know, they've been out three days like us, a lot of community members are irate about, and they, they have a pretty wealthy population of families that they serve in Fairfax. And people are upset, how come you guys haven't rolled out virtual school options and all of that? And the whole thing, the piece that you just came up with is, you know, it's an equity concern, right? We know we have a lot of poverty parents that have the bandwidth and all of that at home, how do we make sure as a district that we're also taking into account those families that don't? And they only been out three days, so they haven't given anything, I mean, like, we're light years ahead of a lot of people with the stuff that we launched today. A lot of this has been out a full week and haven't even done what we've done, so this, that's an opportunity to have some buffer, to keep people quiet while we still try to work on figuring this whole, this whole equity piece. But I do agree, and that's the piece where I would want to leverage, you know, Kaufman, people who got some big money, to do big money initiatives, and that's where I would leverage them to help us from an equity standpoint.
Dr. Bedell, I have a question on the technology component too, is some of that you're talking about, like this charter group, and I don't know what that is, that, that's doing some kind of K-12, whatever, access, I'm wondering about what are we, what are we able to leverage from our local company and corporate, you know, partner on hotspots, which I believe is Sprint, now T-Mobile? And I'm wondering what can we leverage there? And then, secondly, are we, I think to, my comment is to kind of, doesn't even require no response at the moment, but a little bit to Marvia's point, which is
is now exiting.
What kind of, like, deep, like, kind of telephone helpline type of assistance can we provide parents or conference calls that you could set up where parents can get personal direction? I'm concerned about just posting things online and people being able to both access it and understand it. So I'm just wondering about helplines, hotlines, things that are guidance in that way, even for the material that you've already got posted, I'm just wondering if people will really understand what to do with that.
Right, you want to go ahead?
Sure, so Patty, this is Joe, I'll talk about hotspots real quick, so we've been working with a lot of our local partners and industries, so the 1 million project, we put in a request for 1,000 more free hotspots from them, they're not sure they can meet 1,000, but that's what they're going to try to rustle up for us so that we can give those out to our high schoolers. Additionally, another Sprint project is called Connect Ed, that does come at a cost, but it's a low cost as well. T-Mobile has reached out to us, and additionally, we've been working with Google to see what they'll be able to provide us, so what we're trying to do right now is assess and see how many total hotspots you might need so that we can work with all of these different partners and companies to see what it is that we can get, versus what our actual need is, because we want to make sure that, one, we have all the hotspots we need, two, we can disstro them out to the places they need to go so that every student has equitable access. But three, that those hotspots are easy to use as well. We don't want some of those cumbersome hotspots that might be older and sitting on the shelf that some of the companies might be willing to give us for free. For the phone lines, I'll swing back to Dr. Bedell in just a second, but we have repurposed our technology help desk to take calls from anybody who is needing food access delivered to them, so if they can't make it out to one of our four buildings where we'll be disstoring food, they can call our help desk, additionally, we're able to set up any hotline number that we need to put out to the public for any, we need, and we can go ahead and communicate that the best way to get that help is just to call 418 HELP or 357.
And I know we also are working, we work with our unions to talk about making sure that our teachers were available between the hours of nine to three, to provide whatever support parents need, if parents need to reach out, via calling or email, that's available. Some of our teachers have already started reaching out to students. I know as a parent, I only can speak to my daughter who's already shared with me that some of her teachers have already reached out around Google Classroom, and the requirements of having them on starting next week, so that, especially as a senior, whatever assignments need to get done, they can get those knocked out so they can meet graduation requirements. I know that that's not just the case with just that one, that one or two teachers, there are probably multiple teachers that have already started reaching out across the district, because we've been communicating with our principals well before this stuff was launched today. Now, also, ah, okay.
No, I said, yes.
Do you want to jump in, I forgot you were on the line.
Good afternoon, everyone, yes, we have been communicating with principals. Matter of fact, there was a virtual meeting this afternoon with both groups of principals. I know Doc, I know Mr. Jackson had a virtual meeting with his, I think Dr. Flavie was going to have some type of meeting with his as well, because what we're trying to impress upon principals is the degree to which you promote this is the degree to which our teachers and our students will actually become involved. And so, that means that there's got to be a lot of communication, over-communication, sending out emails, doing callouts, making sure that teachers are in contact with their classrooms, their classes. And so, those are things that we are working with principals on this week. Everybody's going to do it a little bit differently based on what, you know, I guess what works for their particular clientele, but every school, we're asking them to figure out a plan, come up with a plan as to how you're going to communicate with your students. And then, the teachers, one of the things that was, Joe was talking about, the Google phone numbers, we're trying to access Google phone numbers so the teachers don't have to give out their actual personal cell numbers, they'll be able to give out those Google phone numbers, and they'll have working hours every day so that if kids have any kind of question with their homework, they can actually call the teacher to get clarity. But then also, our curriculum team met yesterday virtually, and we will be rolling out some videos, mini lessons, on some of the standards that we feel like are probably the ones the kids would need the most amount of support with. And so, those will actually roll out sometime, we're going to go through a peer review process between Thursday and Friday, so we're hoping to be able to roll them out on Monday so that students can go on and click, and those will be added to the site that we already have.
Okay, are any other questions on this part, and then I wanted to let Dr. Bedell go to his next components of update.
Yeah, I think I have two more components to share with you all. The second component is, and I shared this with Rita, first of all, I do want to thank several board members have sent emails and offered some feedback and some suggestions and some ideals. I've shared that with individual cabinet members, but I've also shared it with the whole cabinet. I think it also gives us an opportunity to think about, you know, from our lens of our different departments, some of the things that you all are providing us feedback on, how does that also impact us? Or could, does it give us more ideals to share with our peers in this room? So I want to thank you for that, and, you know, I was telling Rita yesterday, you know, how hard this is because, you know, most, most superintendents can hop on one conference call and they're done, and I have to turn around and hop on a conference call with another 20 superintendents or leaders of charter schools, and I'm tied up another hour and a half, so the burden just becomes, it's just tough, y'all. And so, you know, then having to try to figure out, how do we do what we need to do for our 15,500 kids? And then, taking into account that there's another, you know, 12,000 to 13,000 students in our area, and then, you know, you've got small charters that may have to depend on us to help them because they don't have the bandwidth, or we got large charters that are only focused on themselves, right? And, and, and I think that's part of my frustration was, you know, even with yesterday, I had to say to the charter meeting, you guys can't put all of this on KCPS. I mean, we, we just can't, we can't handle 30,000 people coming to our sites, and you guys don't have to do the work that you need to do in your respective campuses. I just, it's not fair, that's what I told them. And so, we did come to an agreement that the majority of the charters can handle their own food, the ones that are small, like Dylan Sal will take care of, I don't know if other ones have reached out, but, who did? Which, oh, which charter? Oh, Tober, okay, I seem like Tober. So, Tober, Tober has reached out, they're a very small charter. We will help the very small charters. We're not going to be able to help these charters that are, you know, five, six, 700 kids, 1,000 kids, large, they can do this, and they have the staff to do it, so we did all come to that agreement. What we did also come to an agreement on, and I think the charters were very thankful, the conversation that I've been having with Kaufman, the chiefs, you know, speaking with Mark Donovan, Hillstone Church, I have personally spoke to the leaders of those entities, and I said, listen, I know you all want to help, and I know the help has been designed to really want to support KCPS, I ask that you think about the whole boundary as well, and make sure that the things that you do would be able to help supply anywhere from 18,000 to 20,000 students, even though we know we have about 27,000, we're not going to have all 27,000 come out. And so, you know, help supply up to 20,000, and I think that would be great, so they all understand that, I talked to Hillstone Church, I said, if you guys can provide hygiene packets, that would be, that would help us out significantly. And then with the chiefs, because we can take care of breakfast and lunch, I did share with everybody if people want to help with dinner, that's fine, providing packages for people to have dinner, you can help with that. But what I did say with the chiefs, because I know the NFL will help fund this, help our kids out with books, help them out with markets, help them out with athletic materials so that they can get outside in their yards or their complexes and play. And, you know, with the face 60 NFL, that's something they can do. And so, I said, you know, we need help in a lot of other ways other than just food. The USDA has been very generous with us on the food part, that's the reason why we're able to provide the kind of support that we have right now for breakfast and lunch for these families. And so, Mark Donovan is going to reach out to the Royals and some other KC sporting, sporting?
Sporting KC.
And they're going to all try to come together and come up with some plans, and we're going to work with charters on that. We have a working group of charters that, about three charters that will be working with Sharnissa, who will be working with Camilla in her department around those additional supports. And so, we got those folks ready to rock and roll, so we're going to be coordinating with them as we move through this week, as we head into Tuesday. So that's, that's the update that I have on the charter piece.
Can I add to that, Dr. Bedell?
Yes. Yes.
So, to tag on to what Dr. Bedell just mentioned, what we're focusing on with our team as far as those partners and those donations and that really wide swath of folks who want to help us, which is fantastic, we're trying to set up a tier system because like Dr. Bedell said, we have under control right now kind of our breakfast, lunch, our kind of two to three week plan. We're trying to tier and stagger what that looks like for three weeks from now, a month from now, and how those partners can help us as we get to pass maybe this two-week buffer right now. Just want to let you guys know that we're thinking that long-term plan as well as we look for people wanting to donate and support us in our efforts for our kids.
Dr. Bedell, I have a question on the contributions. You know, there's a lot of community conversation right now also about contributions and emergency assistance. And I know Rita and I were just on a call facilitated by the Mid-America Regional Council a few minutes prior to the start of this, on that very topic about emergency assistance. I wondered, there are people who are contacting the school district directly that want to be helpful and make contributions. Is there any thinking about establishing a special line item within the Education Foundation where people and companies that want to donate resources particularly to the Ed Foundation designated for educational and other family supports and assistance? If there's some kind of place where that, that you could set that up and direct people to make those contributions?
That button has been set up, I believe. It's already, it's ready to go. I, I think Kelly, our thing now is just making sure that we convey that. If, if we put that in our stuff that was launched out today, that is definitely available and ready to go. There is a button.
Yes. Yes, we have been working with Camila and our team and Nicole at the foundation to establish that line item and establish that avenue for which people can donate. So, yes, that's something that we will be sharing in our next tier of communication about ways people can donate and help, whether monetarily or through items. So, visited with Camila just about an hour ago and Nicole as well to make sure that's established and that we can share that again in our next tier of communications.
Please do that and push that out to your other, your existing donors because I'm already receiving requests and I'm looking at contributions to United Way and other things for emergency assistance and anything you can do to get that out while people are highly motivated to contribute.
Will do, will do.
What, Kelly, this is Nate. Sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
One thing that I, that would be good, so I was just looking at the Ed Foundation website, and maybe this just hasn't been done yet, is as we, as we go put, obviously the button's not out there yet, but as we publish the donate button specific for this cause, if we can put this on the homepage of the foundation so people don't have to sort of dig around for it, that would be ideal.
Nate, are you referring to the homepage of the foundation or the homepage of KCPS?
The foundation.
Okay, noted.
Excellent, excellent.
I have another question that's come to me about support for employees, if we have employees who are particularly vulnerable, vulnerable. Can you, do you have any updates about what you're doing around kind of employee mental health support or other emergency assistance? Is there anything for employees who might find themselves in a particularly vulnerable situation?
I mean, we generally have our employee assistance program that's always available for employees to take advantage of.
And, and our health provider, our health insurance provider, Blue Cross, said something that went out to employees a day or two ago. We're going to keep doing this throughout, giving them little tidbits of how to take care of yourself. And the one that went out on Monday was, you know, if you're getting stressed, if you're having concerns, or if you're just getting kind of stir-crazy, here's a, here's a number to call, here are some things to do. So, our insurance carrier is providing resources above and beyond our PAP rates.
Thank you. Dr. Bedell, do you have a third area of update for us?
Yeah, I mean, I, I actually, I feel like I took the third area. The third area was to give you all an update on all of the different people that we've been talking to. And I actually just kind of included that in the last part. But, our, our stuff, we rolled it out. We are, at this point, I went over to the, I, yeah, I did have a third part, which is the last bit here. We went over to Paseo today to check on all of our cafeteria workers. We've gotten about 14,000 or so, but at the time I was there, they already had 14,000 meals prepared. And all of that will go into storage into our fridge, our freezers and fridge, and will be ready for distribution. So, they're, they're, they're working hard. I don't know, 46 people or so in different areas at Paseo workers, so that's our staging site. Jordan and Chris were going out to the four sites to go to, to kind of do their observations to make sure that everything was going to be ready to go as we start to then move our food and all of our other items to those different sites. So, our team is, will be ready to go come Tuesday from that standpoint. As Joe stated, we have given a number where people can reach out if they do not have the ability to come and pick up the food, and we will transport. We've already started getting some educators in our system that were volunteering, saying that they would volunteer to hop in cabs or on a bus and help distribute. The, the big thing that we have to be very careful, and I just shared this with Elizabeth Roscoe, I think it's a Roscoe on Northeast News, is we, we got to be careful. Like, a lot of people want to help, and we love all of that help, but this isn't Summerfest, and this is not a Summerfest situation. We, you know, we cannot have a situation where we got 6,000 people all congregated in certain areas when the purpose of this right now is to distance ourselves from people. So, even as I'm having conversations with Kaufman or Hillstone Church, I'm saying to them, you know, try to keep, if we set up tents or tables where you guys will be able to give out your supplies, keep this thing, less than 10 people working those tables, and make sure that, you know, we have the distancing procedures in place. And so, that's, so we just have to be careful because there's a lot of people who want to help, and we want help from people, but a lot of it just can't be physical right now. We got to try to limit any type of exposure to the best of our ability. And so, I know a lot of people will be coming to you all as a board, saying, hey, you know, we want to help. And we can direct everybody, we, we, we have Camilla working on this, Kelly, through Kelly, and we can get all of those numbers and get people connected and tell them, hey, if we need you, this is how we, we, we can, we will reach out to you. That's what we did with the teacher. We emailed her and said, thank you, if, if there's a need for us to have to do that, you'll be one of the first people we will contact. That's how we have to kind of handle this situation.
Dr. Bedell, I think that's really important, and I think it's important to share in a very loving way and make that really evident. And again, I go back to encouraging people that the best way to support right now is also contributing to the Ed Foundation for the possibility of long-term need.
One of the things also to give information about some media aspects to this, today, Jordan gave, our Director of Nutrition Services, gave a great interview to Mariah at The Star about our food distribution process. And then, we have The Star as well as, I think possibly two television stations coming tomorrow to Paseo to really see what's going on behind the scenes at Paseo, limiting that number, just one of their reporters, but they wanted to see the operation at Paseo and this creation of 15,000 meals for our kids is impressive. And so, we're going to invite them in tomorrow to share that story publicly.
So, Kelly, on, on that front, and maybe I, I missed it, and, and maybe it was mentioned earlier and I missed it there as well, but when do we plan to sort of roll out the broad communication around the food distribution, the pack and delivery, et cetera? Is that still happening today?
It happened.
It did happen.
At 12:30, we launched everything, so it's all on the website now.
Okay.
And I, I got a text from one board member where I guess a parent has already, Jennifer Whoopsie, a parent text Jennifer Whoopsie saying that they were very happy with the communication in the, in the, in the rollout. So, so far, one good comment, I'll take it.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. So, the email that, Kelly, that you sent earlier today, is that communication? Have we also put it out on Twitter? And, you know, just basically all the social media channels as well?
We have, yes. So, the communication out to our staff at noon, to the public at 12:30, and directly about 12:35 was released on social. So, that's, and that's also went out as a press release, which is why we're getting several requests for media interviews. Again, Dr. Bedell's done a podcast today, we're setting up a couple more for him for next week, and then we have two tomorrow. And then, the other interest was, on this first day, Tuesday next week for that distribution site, can we have some media folks there as well? We're going to accommodate all of those. So, again, really being real sensitive and strategic in how we accommodate those requests to make sure we're being safe, but also sharing our story because there are some really great pieces of story in here with all the people who are helping so much.
No, I appreciate it. Go ahead, Dr. Bedell.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, I appreciate it, and apologies, I've, yeah, I've, I actually decided to take a walk outside for a couple hours today because I was going a little bit crazy, so I may have missed. I'm glad to hear that it's all, it's, a social guy like me, man, you throw me in a cage and bad things happen, and so. Anyway, I, I'm glad that you've gotten the, the communication out there so effectively, appreciate it.
Here's where we need some help from you all. I, you know, I don't think that people have started jumping on the school district for not sending out work right now, and I know that some, some superintendents in other districts are around, around the country have some people that are, in my opinion, are being very unreasonable, like they've only been closed three days, asking them, where's, where's assignments? And some districts are much larger than us, so it may take a little bit longer for them to get their stuff out, but we got it out. Now, here's the deal, this is not to start until next Tuesday, right? So, I don't, you know, we built this out for it to go from next Tuesday through next Friday, and it is a daily unit for these kids to work on in math and in, in, in English and in science at the elementary level, and then all three of those areas plus social studies at the high school level. So, you know, kids are on spring break, if, if people are asking you all questions, you know, ultimately, this is to go live on the 9th. We haven't mail packages out yet. People can take what we put online, and they can download it, and they can, they can get started on Tuesday, even if they don't have the package, they can get started. But, you know, we want, we want our families to try to enjoy their spring break, and would ask that you all help encourage that they do that. And, and then Tuesday, everything should be ready to go for them.
Dr. Bedell, thank you. I, I have just a couple of questions, and I, and I want to make sure if any of my colleagues do. My question comes back to Dessie, and I just want to be sure I'm, I'm really clear. You've not had any more explicit directions from Dessie regarding if the closure would have to go past a two to three week period, what they are planning or anything like that? I'm just wondering about that kind of direction.
Not at all, and in, everything that I keep hearing is, is we're going to leave it up to districts to make the local decisions. That's all we have.
Okay. Is there any value in the unaccredited and provisionally accredited districts requesting a group call with Dessie? Because we are highly, those of us who are in the provisional or the unaccredited status are highly vulnerable during this time?
Yeah, we all are, but I, I think what the state will do, I, I think this thing, at least in the conversations I've had with most of the superintendents, believe that the state will probably end up waiving those, you know, not holding districts harmless this year. I don't know that anybody's going to be held. I mean, every, you know, and everybody's just like they're staying in their position another year or as we, you know, get, so, yeah, it hurts us, but it hurts us if we also say we want to take the assessment and our kids have been out like this. So, no, which, here, but that's, you know, that's where I think we're heading.
So, it's a little bit of a longer-term question, but one that I've been trying to wrap my head around. So, let's, let's assume, and I don't think it's a crazy assumption, but let's assume we're going to end up closing the district for the rest of the school year. I hope that's not the case, obviously, but let's assume that that's how this plays out. Then, what are we going to do for those kids? Let, let's just use a scenario. I'm a, I'm a fifth or sixth grader, I'm about to go to middle school, and I'm sort of on the fringes academically. This last semester, I had an opportunity to sort of get things back in order and pass this current grade and move on to middle school. But, I didn't get that opportunity, right? Because the last semester was sort of wiped out by this whole ordeal. What am I going to do with that kid as a, as a school district? Am I going to move them to middle school knowing that they're maybe not quite prepared? Or am I going to hold them back when they would have had the potential to move to the sixth grade had they had that last semester to sort of get them over the hump? And it's maybe not a question that we answer today, but I just think about, like, there are long-term implications even beyond that scenario I just gave you and that kid's future in the immediate term, but then how does that affect that kid's trajectory long-term throughout the rest of their, you know, K-12 educational experience?
Yeah, I, I think, I think, Nate, that we're, we're going to have to have these discussions, and we're going to have to come up with some answers for these so that we can make sure that it's equitable across the districts and roll those out to principals, but also involve them in the planning of that. And I did tell them that more information will be forthcoming regarding different committees because what we'll have to do is, if we end up going through the end of the school year, what I foresee happening is us having different committees such as grading, such as promotion requirements, such as, I mean, just a lot of different things that we come together on, and we make the decision as to how we're going to proceed. We don't have those answers right now, but all of those will become a part of our discussion within the next week, and they know, I'm keeping them informed every day, they know that there is a chance. I mean, we don't, and I don't want to put it out there and get anyone in fear by saying, hey, more than likely it will happen, but what I am telling them is, if by chance it happens, we started the conversation, and so more conversations will need to happen, and we'll involve you, you guys in those conversations as we deem appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's an internal conversation, but it's a conversation with Dessie as well, right? So, anyway, yeah, no, I totally wasn't expecting you guys to have an answer today. It's just something that's been sort of weighing on me heavily because I think it has long-term impact for, you know, the kids on the fringes, right? The ones who could have made it to the next level don't have that opportunity.
And, I mean, the truth, I don't know that we'll be able to depend on a lot of direction from Dessie. I think what in a lot of cases they'll want is for us to come up with a plan and to present that plan. There are a lot of things that they've not been able to give us concrete guidance on. We have to read through, and then we figure out how we're going to do, and then we present it. So, but we'll keep everyone posted as we move through, and I have placed this as something on my list, so thank you for bringing that up.
Thanks.
And I will tell you too, we got a list of things that we're talking about with the cooperate with school districts, and that's one of them. So, that's something that we will continue, I think, we, we, we talk probably every two to three days, and these little scenarios come up, and we're also, we also have a thread where we all keep in contact and we're asking these kind of questions. So, this is definitely one of them that we are all trying to figure out. So, you don't have a situation where you might have a divided family where some kids are living in KCPS and then some kids are living out in Raytown, and it's been a whole different process for Raytown versus KCPS with kids that might be on the fringes. So, our job is, we're trying to be as aligned as we can on all of these issues as opposed to a superintendent, and then I'll turn around and try to share, you know, a lot of that with the charters so we can be aligned to the best of our ability inside our boundaries.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to put out a call for final questions, comments from board.
I just wanted to reiterate something that you guys kind of said earlier that I think has been impressive. So, we are still on spring break, and I know for my family and the families I keep in contact with, we're kind of thinking about the future, but we're not interested in like work packets or anything right now. I see people kind of going nuts on Facebook about that, like, what are we going to do? But, I think for us to still be at the beginning of spring break and we already have like work and a calendar, I thought the calendar was a nice touch as far as like what activities you should do on each day. I thought that was really helpful because people are like, how do I structure my day? People are like looking for free links to, you know, content online, so this really I, I think does put KCPS... I think, does put KCPS ahead. So, my family members in the Grandview and Raytown districts, they have not seen any of the stuff that we have put out with KCPS thus far. So, just kudos to your team for doing that and being ahead of it that way, and I know, you know, we'll work out the other stuff about what does it mean long-term, so, thank you.
Thank you, absolutely, and I do, we just have to make sure somehow, Kelly, we reiterate that. I personally want to be off right now, too, I ain't going to lie to you, I had this scheduled off, we've been working, but, but we're getting things done, and, but I do, I just want, I really, I'm trying to make sure that our families don't have to stress anymore by getting this stuff out now, but getting it out now, you need to start doing it now, let these kids have their spring break.
Yeah, wonderful sentiments, and I completely agree, and I think what's been nice to see from the messaging standpoint, from the board and from our leadership team, is that flexibility and grace, knowing that we're still on spring break. So, we'll make sure that we convey that in our public messages as well. Thank you for that point.
Are there other board members who have any questions, comments?
Patty, it's Manny.
Okay.
Dr. Bedell, I know this is going to sound crazy, but I'm literally on a call with every major hospital provider at the moment, and they're all yelling and screaming about their lack of continuity in their nurses and doctors, and they're kind of underhandedly blaming us, not us specifically, but the school system's closing, which is counterintuitive, but nevertheless, I'm wondering if there's ever a world or place that we can consider something down the road if we go too much longer for healthcare providers specifically, and the childcare that's provided there. I know that creates all kinds of issues, but this can be a unique element here that can get people back to work to help sure that they're being supported in that system as well. So, just wanted to throw that out there, does require response to something in the back of your mind.
Manny, I know that question was for, or that point was for Dr. Bedell, I'm not sure I fully understand what you're saying or asking for.
I have a daycare, yeah.
Yeah, childcare.
Childcare, and I, and I think I said this the last time we met, I mean, I, I don't see how I can, how I can try to do that when we're all being told to distance ourselves. I don't, I mean, I totally understand, and I hear what you're saying, Manny, and I don't know, North Kansas City may be doing something like that, but I, I'm like, okay, you know, we talked to him, and he may be doing something like that out there in his district, but I don't know how, if something, something happens to one of those kids, I don't know what kind of liability is going to be there for North Kansas City. So, that's something that we were asking him, but none of the other districts at this point are looking to do that, just given the fact that the whole purpose of all of this was not to have that number of people congregating one area at one time. But I mean, I understand.
Manny, if you want to reach, if you want to talk offline, I know that in Johnson County, they're designating specific childcare sites as emergency use for first responders and healthcare providers, and those childcare sites that are full-time childcare are working with the county health department to make sure that they've got the adequate pieces in place to provide that service. So, I'm sure there's a way to replicate that in Jackson County, but it needs, it probably needs to be with an institution that already has teachers and physical facilities in place.
And I think from the cities that I've seen and been following who have been doing this, they, it's, it's from the city, it's at the city level, it's not necessarily the school district that is doing it, it's like the county and the city are designating which places can be open, and what they need to do to put in place the requisite criteria for that. But, yeah, I think that if we did think about doing something like that, it couldn't be the district on its own, the district would have to coordinate with the city to get that squared away, like, the school districts aren't doing this on their own.
And I know, that's, but that's an excellent suggestion, Rita, that you were saying around utilizing some other entity to do it. The, I know with some of our daycares, they're already struggling, because if you've seen some of folks on news that's been interviewed, they're struggling to stay open because there's a number of parents not bringing their kids to the daycares. They're not, like, I'm not putting my child out here, this one, this one lady that was interviewed the last two days was saying she doesn't know how she's going to be able to stay open. So, we know that there are, there are a lot of people that are practicing keeping their kids home, but those health providers don't have a choice. They have to get out, and they have to get out there and provide service, and honestly, you know, I think the school districts doing, we doing, we're doing a lot right now, right? We're working with people, we got, we provide lunches, breakfast and lunch, we've got work packets, the stuff that we're supposed to do, right? We've gotten entities that come out and help us with books and activity books and all of those kind of things, and hygiene packages. So, yeah, I think at the end of the day, okay, there's other major entities in this city that can step up and help with this daycare thing.
I'm just going to, Kathleen here, I have been in regular communication with John Stamm at City Hall, I talk to him throughout all the days. The childcare thing is coming up at City Hall, you know, it's a thing they're wondering about as well. So, if you, any of you are talking about this offline or working with other organizations, if you can loop me into those emails, because I'm talking to John frequently, that would be really helpful, and I can also try to work, do any liaising that I can do on my end. But, that's definitely something that they're worried about at City Hall, it's definitely something the mayor's office is talking about, so if you'd like to keep me in the loop there, I'll be as helpful as I can.
Are there additional last questions or comments from any board members who haven't had a chance to weigh in?
I think I'm good, just thanks for, thanks for everything you guys are doing, Dr. Bedell and team, we appreciate you guys.
No, thank you all, because every single one of you have given us excellent feedback, and something to think about. I'll, you know, I'll also take this daycare idea, because we did talk about daycare, but we didn't think about it from that angle, of how do we, maybe we could come together as superintendents and put some pressure on the political institutions to step up something about this daycare piece, and that's something that I can definitely put on the radar, you know, to talk to these folks about when we have our next meeting.
Thank you for everyone's input and guidance, and Dr. Bedell, it's been a great update. If there are no final comments or information needs to be provided, we will adjourn, I will remind everyone that we do have a board meeting next Wednesday, and that Wednesday will be via this platform. So, we will be meeting, we will have a meeting, it will be somewhat pared down, but we will have our meeting next week. So, thanks, everybody, and thanks to IT who just really helped us tremendously. There, some of us, I won't name names, are locally ill-equipped in this technology. We will not say their names, even if it's the woman speaking right now.
Patty, you may ask her names.
Patty, on Monday, there was some talk about possibly having a special board meeting tomorrow, and we had thought about having one Friday, or we're going to have no meeting until Wednesday?
I think that we, did we, June, are you there, did we actually publicize a Friday update as well?
No, we did not, because that was still a question mark. Okay, so, we publicly noticed today, Monday and Wednesday. I guess the question would be if we should need a meeting on Friday or Monday, I think I would look to the superintendent to advise us at that time.
Yeah.
But have we publicly noticed it?
Yeah, if there are any significant changes to what's happening, then, yeah, I would say we need to do that. I mean, right now, give it, just like we've been doing, I like the two-day deal, and I feel like now that we got a lot more things under control, now that we've lost a lot of our stuff, I want to kind of get some feedback from folks, maybe there's some feedback that will come in from families, and some suggestions or things that might be of value to the board, but I think the big hurdles, we've already been able to jump over, like, we, now the deal is to make sure that this launch on Tuesday goes smoothly, that's the next big thing.
So, Mark, is that helpful to you right now?
It is, thanks.
Okay. Thank you to everybody, very grateful, I want to echo Nate's words, grateful to all of you, and with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Oh, one more thing, hold on, I did want to ask this, hey, were we going to, was the board going to do a resolution for Ms. Ragsdale's passing?
I requested of June, unless you all feel differently, I feel like it would not have very much power to do it in this manner, and if you believe that it would be valuable to do that next week, we can proceed, but we will not have any personal engagement with the family, and that feels inadequate, but I'm open to your recommendation.
Yeah, I thought several people that spoke to me was interested in getting one, given her service in the school district and her service as a former board member, and there were folks that I think at her funeral services would have been, you know, willing to read it, I guess. I don't even know how they're going to do funeral services if we all can't come together. Okay, I understand.
Dr. Bedell, the question is, we can actually develop a resolution, but we would be doing it through this mechanism, and people would, her family would have to view it via live stream. So, the, I think the question is, do we want to delay that so that we have the opportunity to correctly honor Ms. Ragsdale and her family in person?
I don't know, you're right, this is different, I don't know what to say, and I don't have, I don't have an answer to that, because I, you know, my mindset was still, the funeral's happening this Saturday, and it could be read, but you're right, there's, people are not going to be, I mean, I think it'd be immediate family that may be there, I don't know.
Patty, Jennifer?
This is June, and so, I have asked Ray if we could have that by Saturday, because Ms. McGill did request to have the proclamation done on Saturday.
Okay, so, they want it for their funeral and not for our board meeting, okay. All right, well, then, we'll finalize that, then, June, I can assist you.
All right.
I think Ray Wykel's working on it, but thank you.
Okay. Are we done, everyone? Thank you all, this meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.